Want to call the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum present. Next, make approval to approve the minutes of July 9th, 2020?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Any opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation. Approval to draft a facade improvement grant agreement with the local foresight in facade improvements at 396 West Irving Park Road, an amount not to exceed $71,062.50. That would be my motion.
Second.
Do we have a presentation or...? No? Okay. Mayor?
I have some questions.
Okay. Oh, we do have a presentation? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Let's see the presentation before we start asking questions.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. So, yes, hopefully this will answer a number of things. There'll be quite a few numbers on how we got there through Streetscape, but we had a bit of a hiatus recently with the facade improvement grant, just because we seem to have a number bunched a couple of years ago. I know JB's was one of them. A little bit of a gap in between. Now, we have one before you this evening for 396 West Irving Park Road, the local Bar &amp; Grill. And I know we have one in the works, hopefully coming to our next Streetscape meeting. So, this went to the Streetscape and Economic Enhancement Committee meeting on July 6th. I think everyone's pretty familiar with the location. Dalewood, Irving Park Road, Miller Lane. Obviously occupies the corner. Obviously, the building is right here. And I know the... I know we've talked about this previously. The new owner purchased, I believe, the property in around November of last year. And the property is at least 30 years old, which is one of the criteria. So, kind of just going back in time a little bit, I know there's some prior history with the prior owner in terms of making an application. That was back in January 2016. Just kind of the highlights, new monument sign, dumpster enclosure, and then a number of other things included. And of course, you'll remember the policy. Any improvements part of the policy for the facade improvement grant is that you have to maintain it for three years. So, wasn't particularly clear in the policy is that what happens when property owner changes. So, staff's approach was, and obviously, you know, this is why we're here at the committee meeting, staff's approach was it's been longer than the three years. We have a new owner, but obviously, there's some history there in terms of a prior application. So, simply what we did was the maximum grant allowance is $130,000. The prior owner did obtain the $32,000 and change. Essentially, what we did was take that off the 130 to get the available amount. So, available, not full amount, of the 97 and change. So... And I know this is something staff will be, you know, is looking for some direction. I know we developed the policy a number of years ago. I believe in '14, just prior to me coming here. We have tweaked it to do the scoring criteria, I know, two or three years ago. And what we're looking for now, in conjunction with this application, is, you know, if the council feels strongly about new ownership, timeframe, some of those things, some direction from our standpoint would be helpful. You know, just kind of like what we're doing now in terms of prior owner taking the prior amount off the 130 to get to the 97. So, with that moving along, I think we all know what the location is. Obviously, these are existing... Oh, sorry. The existing conditions when the photograph was taken. And then I would draw your attention. I know we've talked about this before. The canopy was damaged. Oops, I apologize. The canopy area was damaged. This picture shows that it was under construction. That was kind of a transition period between the prior owner and the new owner. And obviously, there was an insurance claim because it was damaged. And this was going back to fall of 2019 or even before that, when it was damaged. Kind of just running through some of the key elements of the facade program. Eligible expenses, facade renovation, obviously a key one. Entrance features. I'm not going to go through these in detail. I'm sure there'll be questions. Windows and doors, architectural elements. Oops, sorry, my phone again. I'm going to have to... Landscaping. So, these are all elements that were discussed and put in place for the original policy. Obviously, the goal was to improve commercial properties along Irving Park Road. Ineligible expenses. And obviously, if we have questions, we can kind of jump around a bit and come back to this. I know there was, you know, maintenance was a huge issue. It's not an eligible expense. It's ineligible. And I know this has come up a couple of times with a couple of other applications. So, kind of moving right along, these are the proposed elevation. Proposed elevation, some of this, obviously, the... Some of this work has been done in terms of like the painting and some other things. I know the applicant is here this evening. So, if there's any business-related questions, I know he'd be willing to answer those. Moving along. Obviously, this would be the facade facing Irving Park Road here, Dalewood here. Some key elements, obviously landscaping, the new door along, you know, which would be facing Irving Park Road. So, one of the elements which I think actually really will improve the property, just from my opinion, the canopy. I mean, as just rushing back real quick, I mean, you can see the size of it. This did impact some handicap parking spaces that were along here. That's one of the reasons this canopy was shortened. Obviously, it's an architectural element. In its prior form, it wasn't, again, it's all tastes, not my preference. And it was really kind of oversized for what it was, but it served a purpose for a number of years. And then kind of jumping back, so what we have now is kind of a revised entrance way. That was done, you know, obviously after the damage was started by the prior owner. And canopy shortened. Now, we have, and we've heard this loud and clear from the council before, accessible parking close to the canopy, close to the entrance, which is exactly where it's supposed to be, and some nice architectural elements. I'm not sure of the exact name. Architectural screen, trellis, what have you. But that component, obviously, with some landscape planters, I think makes, in my opinion, a big difference to that entrance way. Moving along, obviously, the west elevation up here and the north elevation, which at the bottom of the page there, and east elevation along Dalewood with the proposed new landscaping, and south elevation here. So, moving along to the fun stuff. So, just cast our minds back. So, the policy, we require, the city requires the applicant to get three cost estimates. These are the three cost estimates. For, you know, a lot of numbers on there, but essentially, these are the costs of the proposals for each estimate. And I would point out, there's a couple of elements on here that eligible, ineligible. Just point those out real quick. Shed is ineligible. I think it's number two. If my eyes are... Yes, number two, new shed, new decking. So, these numbers, this number here... Sorry. I'm going to try and stop doing that. So, these two numbers have been excluded from the total number here. So, this is the total for the estimate. These are the eligible expenses estimate. So, as you recall, when we're doing our calculation, it's not this number. It's this number here. So, staff, I believe the applicant is going with ultra casa, which obviously is the lower of the three estimates. Staff takes the lowest number of the three, which is actually pretty similar for the two lowest ones. And that's where we look to take the calculation, the percentage from. So, the scoring policy, when we revised the policy a couple of years, two or three years ago, staff wanted to put in a policy that, you know, would help define what percentage the applicant would be entitled to. Obviously, we have the numbers of 15 here. The applicant did score it a little bit higher. Staff brought it down to 15. Essentially, what that means is with that score, the applicant would be entitled to 37.5% of the eligible number. So, it would be this number right here. And so, oh, I should have covered that. So, we've got the 37.5%, which I just covered. Any project has to exceed $10,000 in minimum, which it clearly has. Property is greater than 30 years old, which it is, and it scored 15 on the scoring criteria. So, what that means is, and I don't have this on a slide, but I have it in my notes somewhere. Okay, so... Here we go. So, the Streetscape Committee approved... Sorry, jumping back one second. So, the eligible amount times the 37.5% totals... Yes, but the... Interestingly, at the Streetscape, so the total is about $62,000 and change, because the 37.5%. The Streetscape meeting, which was on July 6th, they recommended approval, but they recommended approval of the parking lot at 50%. So, what we took was the 50% of the parking, multiplied that by the 37.5%. I know a lot of numbers going on here, but what that did was that took the 60, the recommended staff amount, which was 62,000 and change, and took that up to a recommended amount per the Streetscape of $71,062.50. With that, I know there's going to be a number of questions. I'll stop talking. Streetscape unanimously approved it with that change. So, today, before we get to the discussion, the recommendation coming from Streetscape was a facade improvement grant for $71,062.50. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Just to mention, the Streetscape Committee, the reason they added in that parking lot was because they were not considering the part that's right now is just gravel, and they're actually making that asphalt. They're paving that. So, we, you know, we as a committee decided that, you know, it is definitely an improvement. So, we added that back in. Any questions? No? Alderman Wesley? E. Wesley?
He was going to ask first.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Got a few questions. So, when we started this program, we did it for facade purposes, not maintenance-type purposes, right?
Correct.
And I'm going through the list here, and, you know, the concrete and the frame, front canopy, new roof. Replacing shingles, for me, is like maintenance-type stuff. It's not, it's not like they changed the roof or something, otherwise, so everybody on Irving Park and with Dalewood can come and get 30%, 37% of their roof taken care of. That's not why we started this program, for stuff. Same thing with painting. We paid for painting the first time, and so this time around really should be ineligible. Are we going to start painting everybody's building every four to five years, six years, until we get a number of $130,000? Again, it's not, that was the intention of the program. The parking lot, so the replacing, the one end, I believe parking is allowed, correct? So, I was... My numbers are, I'm looking at eligible items, about $113,000 and 37.5% of that, because... So, we also give money for demolition and hallway debris. We're paying for garbage. And then we're also giving break on the permit fee. I mean, the permit fee is not that big a deal, but we want to do the project.
Mr. Cage?
So, to answer all your questions, these are all good questions, which I know when we develop a new policy, I know that's why we came back and tweaked it, because we had some applications that raised a number of these questions. And I see this as a, this is a good program, but it needs constant modification. And I know that the council, before I was here, had some very specific desires. So, there's some excellent points in there, and I think as we go along, the clearer the council is in terms of what should be, what's eligible and what's ineligible is helpful for us.
Yeah, and honestly, when we started this, we were talking that people basically have, you know, come forward once per building and, you know, if not till you hit the $130,000 max. But here, we have a change in ownership. We do have some changes, you know, with doorways and the canopies and a few of those things, and the parking lot, which the first person decided not to proceed with.
Correct.
You know, I'm okay with that. I just, some things, you know, like I said, all these, my number would be off of basically $113,000, a percentage off of that, but I'd like to hear what the rest of the council has to say, because I know we intended this for a specific reason, and I might as well just have everybody on Irving Park come to us for a new roof. And that wasn't the intention of the program at all.
Mr. Cage?
Just to clarify, I know that in the past, we've had an applicant who did receive funding for a roof on Irving. So, again, it's a great program. I think from a staff standpoint, that's why we have these discussions, because it helps, you know, really transfer what the goal is, which I know what the general goal is, but each application is slightly different, brings up some other issues. I mean, the bottom line is, we want projects to come in. And I think from a staff standpoint, the challenge we've always had is kind of getting that balance between eligible and ineligible. And I know some people have managed to creatively come on one side, and some have fallen on the other. So, this is all very good feedback. I appreciate it.
Okay. Just one comment I'd like to make is, I agree to an extent on the mayor about the roof, but the painting, I mean, it is a totally different property owner now, so when we do allow paintings, I don't see why we would be against that. I mean, I understand the roof, but the painting with the new owner, I really personally don't see a big issue with that. But next, we had Alderman E. Wesley.
I agree with the mayor. Roofing and a painting, I don't see how that could be in the facade program. The other thing, could you go back to that picture of the entrance in the front of the building?
Sure.
Oh, you passed.
Oh. This one?
Yeah. So, what's going on with that guardrail? Now there ain't a guardrail in front of it?
Sir?
You taking it out? The yellow rail? Put that in there because we voted to put that in there for a safety issue.
Mr. Cage?
Yes, so the... We're, I don't need to tell anyone, we're at a unique period in time. Obviously, we've had some restaurants that have closed. We have some restaurants that are open. I know a number of restaurants have taken opportunity to remodel. Some of that has been more significant. Some of it has just been painting and new carpeting. From a safety standpoint, we're talking about this barrier right here.
Yeah.
You know, my opinion on that, safety is not up for debate. So, we would want that back in.
The guardrail is not... It's still there.
So, removed, it's still there. Because of a drawing, it doesn't matter. It's still there.
It's not in a drawing.
It's still there.
Okay, one at a time, guys.
So, I guess to answer your question, when the architect draws the plans, they don't include the guardrail on.
Okay.
So, if it were removed, it would be replaced, but it's not.
Okay. Next, Alderman Catalano. Did you have something before? Alderman Sizmarski?
So, if a guardrail is there, why isn't it a guardrail in front of that next building over? It's even closer to the street. Number two, you're talking about a facade project. This is the second owner of a building who came in and decided to re-rect a different business. Not a business that was sitting here, a brand-new business. You know, change everything, shut his business down, and you want to sit here and argue about whether or not you're going to give this guy money when he shut down during a pandemic? Shut his business down, no income whatsoever, and you want to sit here and argue about whether or not to give him something in retrospect? Are you serious? You've got to be kidding me. You are out of your minds to sit here and not give him something in return. And I don't have anything to do with this gentleman. I don't know him from Adam. But you want to sit here and argue about a guy that bought some business during a pandemic and give him crap about a building and this and that? That's enough. I've said my piece. You want to do, you do what you want to do. I'm done.
Okay. Alderman Woods, did you have something?
Alderman Jacob?
Alderman Messina? I didn't see, I didn't see your hand.
I was the last person. Who was that?
That was me, Mr. Messina.
I didn't see your hand, but go ahead.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes, sir.
Got it. Okay.
Did you have something?
Could I be recognized?
Yes.
No, I think Alderman Sizmarski has some very valid points as the mayor. But we also, the program was designated to provide cleanup for distressed properties. I think that it's well-intended. It's not what I would call a distressed property when he bought it. I do believe the, when he bought it, he knew what he was buying. At the same time, there are some things we just can't allow to be qualified. So, I tend to say that I agree with the mayor's recommendation.
Okay. Was that it?
Hey. Hi. How's it going?
I was going in order.
Am I recognized?
You're recognized. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Jacob. You know, it's been five years, Mayor, that I've been sitting up here and I've never gone a street that you aren't on. However, in this case, I'm going to go north while you're going south. And I say that intentionally because of the committee that spends hours being a former member of that committee. I think we put that whole thing together. And they recommended it after hours of debate and questioning. And sometimes, you got to just try to get that round peg in that square box. This owner came in, it's the first time I'm seeing him tonight. He just went filters. He did a phenomenal job during a no-income period. So, I'm going to side with the committee and say if they felt this, I'm with that 100% because I was on that committee, and I know the work they do. So...
My comment to that would be, I do agree, but I mean, I do agree with the mayor too, the roof. I mean, I think that should be looked at, but I think for the, for future items, I mean, it wasn't, it was eligible, it was an eligible expense prior to today, and now we're going to take it away. I mean, I agree that needs to be looked at, because like you said, we don't want everybody coming for a new roof. Mr. Murmas?
I believe the intent of having the ability to include an item like a roof originally was not for people to apply for a new roof in exclusivity, but as part of an overall improvement project, whereas if you made other aesthetic improvements and it happened to include a roof redone as part of those other larger-scale aesthetic improvements, that's when it would be appropriate to include. It would never be appropriate to include in the facade program, as the mayor said, if somebody just wanted to apply for a new roof. That wouldn't make any sense, but as part of a larger-scale aesthetic improvement, I believe this was vetted out at council and committee, the policy to apply for the facade program. And at that time, that was the gist of the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Murmas. Alderman Woods, and I know you've been on the Streetscape for quite a while, so you might be able to shed some light on some of this.
I champion putting the program together to begin with. Most of the people aren't here. I mean, Jeff, I think, is one of the remaining.
Who was on that board?
But, so, part of those statements are correct on both ends. So, to the community development director, Mr. Cage's point that we did pay for a roof, we did pay for one, and we paid, structurally, they changed the roof itself, and they changed completely the material selection from an asphalt. It wasn't just a maintenance issue going to a metal roof. So, it was a drastic change. So, in this particular case, the owner of the property did do some work to that roof, so I don't have a problem paying for the work he did on the roof. They took out what used to be a solarium-type improvement there. They reframed the roof, and with that, they had to re-shingle the roof, where I converge from both of the sides is paying for the whole roof. I'm okay with paying for part of the roof, because that... I'm okay with paying for part of the roof because that. There are rules that we live with where we give money away. And roofs can be disproportionate to the project. And if they become an absolute add-on, and they're 100%, the program's going to get blown out of the water. Because you get into, if you went to Georgetown, and they changed the Mansard and had to patch the roof because they did that, we'd have to pay, that roof is probably $2.5 million. Right? So, it's a disproportionate thing. We're not at all picking on them or beating them up. Any money that we, we don't give them here, we're willing to give them on the other stuff. The only thing in question really is the roof. And in my opinion, it should be half of the roof at whatever the percentage is. The paint, because you had to do so many, work on so many elevations of the building, certainly you could create an argument that you needed to repaint the building because there was work on at least three elevations. Well, the fourth, because you put the shed and everything in the back. So, all four elevations were affected. There was work on all four elevations, so I could see repainting. Although, in general, painting, repainting the building wouldn't, in its original form, be part of the project from Streetscape. It was a kind of a maintenance thing. But in this particular case, because of the scope of work, I would say that we should pay for the painting. The only thing in question to me, they did a nice job on the other stuff, is the amount that we pay on the roof. That's the only change I would look to see and change that 50% of the cost. And then, whatever money that they have, they can put into the parking lot. The parking lot's going to chew up that amount of money, no problem.
Mr. Cage?
Yes, without wanting to jump ahead of anyone, I think we've got some really good, clear direction. Obviously, I've got to sit down with a calculator and bring it back. I hear all of you loud and clear, this is a good, this is a good program. Streetscape spent a lot of time on it, you guys spent a lot of time on it. It helps benefit the community, the businesses. I think we're kind of splitting hairs, and I think I've got a pretty good handle on what to work on in terms of the numbers to bring back. And we could certainly, you know, through the city manager, we can distribute that early just to make sure that everybody's, that we're all on the same page. If there's a positive recommendation, we'll work up the numbers with Mr. Wilson and bring them back if the committee's comfortable with that.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Thank you, hope it put this to rest tonight. I find it very confusing that, oh, you're on the Streetscape Committee still, right?
Yep.
Okay, the committee that you're a member of recommended this. And I would say that the majority of the committee voted together that this is the way it should be. So, now to sit here and dissect what's already been debated, spoke about, it's a little ridiculous to me that we spend this kind of time on stuff. And now, we want to change it all? That's it.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, well, that's how the system works. Streetscape's a recommending body, just like all the other recommending bodies, and it's up to us to look at it. We're the ones that developed the program. I was on this before the program ever started, when we were just trying to get the idea off the ground and everybody was beating it to death. So, nobody backs it more than I do. But the program's got to be run correctly, and it's got to be applied evenly, and this makes it even. I don't think this is brought up. I didn't, I was unable to make that meeting. If I was at that meeting, I would have brought the same thing up then and probably had it changed there. I don't think anybody thought about it. They didn't talk, they didn't think about the implications of future projects. So, it's not, again, about beating this up or want to change what everybody else put time and effort into. It's trying to make the program more consistent and make more sense across the board.
Alderman Jacob, can I be recognized?
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
Yeah, so I was part of that crew with art. I won't say that I had the idea, but I think I had the idea on Streetscape. But irregardless, the point of it, when we, when we developed it, was to really clean up parts of the community that were distressed. And I'll repeat what I said before. If crossroads had not closed, they would not have been considered what I would consider a distressed property. When I buy a house, I know there are things that need to be done. While I absolutely agree there are some things that qualify, I wholeheartedly agree with Alderman Woods that we are setting a very, very bad precedent if we approve this as-is. Especially, yes, they're a directing body, committee, but there are rules. And we have to be very careful about setting precedents. So, I just hope you guys will keep that in mind as you decide on the amount.
Is that it, Mr. Messina? Alderman Messina? Go ahead, Mayor.
First off, we're not here to beat up the business owner. We are going to contribute because he's done different things to this building. I brought up a couple of things, like landscaping was in there before, and we have to pay for landscaping again. Georgetown painted their building twice in the last six years. Should we be paying for that? Again, certain properties, typical maintenance items was not the goal of this program. Now, okay, so he's changed a few things and painting could be included. Fine, the roof, listen, if we're going to, because he's made some changes, partial. And the parking lot, the way I'm understanding, we don't even have a permit for that yet. So, even if we allow 50% of, and pay the 37.5% of the 50%, that money won't be dispersed until he actually does the work, of course. So, I mean, everybody can say we're doing it, but, you know, we know we've had a pandemic and he's spent some money on this building. And that parking lot might have to wait till next year, I don't know. We don't know that. But we're not trying to beat him up. Trying to, program's got to be consistent. I think the roof, we're talking, are we talking about a special on the roof? Yeah, so that was more of a canopy around the building. And we changed it from that, whatever, that wood, pretty sad-looking thing to what it looks like now. And, right, so that was the only thing he did to the building, but there's a difference, right? It's facade, right? So, this is just taking the shingles off, putting new ones on. Now, yes, the canopy's redone, so part of that roof is over by the garage door, which, you know, opens up the whole area, makes it look nicer. So, that's some work over there. Okay, so, we want to go with half the roof and give a percentage on half the roof? I'm okay with that. I'm just trying, again, don't want to set precedence. And I want to make sure that this program is used for what it was meant for. Not for, you know, just fixing roofs and a paint job every five, six years, and a paint job and a roof every 20 years, until we get to 130,000. And again, when we did it, we basically said, once the building comes through, they're done. But this is a new owner, so he is getting the benefit of the doubt. It's like the generator program. We have that, the house changes owner. I believe that new owner doesn't get to come in and get a generator, the way it was set. Right. So, that's a new owner, see? So, that might be a little problem in that program and might have to be looked at because I'm sure at some point it will come forward. But that's all we're trying to do. We're, just want to make sure we're doing the right, the right thing. And paying for the full amount of what's been said here. Listen, I've been on Streetscape, and when we did the street signs and all that stuff, you've seen some of the street signs, we tried and were gone. And then, signs came forward, and then we changed colors, and we did, we've made changes to some of the recommendations. It happens. So, it's not set in stone because it comes from Streetscape that it's 100%. If there's something, like the signs, we made changes when the signs came forward. Why don't we go with what was said? Well, because we got some samples, they didn't look right. We made changes. So, that's our job as the elected to make sure we spend the money the right way. We're not trying to beat up this business. We want him to succeed. We want him to be here for the next 50 years. Again, we just need to come up with a number.
Okay. Based on what I'm hearing, it sounds that we're, we'd all agree if we change the roof, as Alderman Woods had stated, rerun that number. I'm going to have one more question, and then we're going to.
You have a question?
You have to adjust your motion.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to agree to change my, change the motion to, roof to half, half the roof. Does the second agree?
I'm waiting for a question here.
Senator would like to see what numbers, Mr. Cage comes back.
We would have that next week.
He'll have that next week.
We need to make a motion?
Well, we need to make a motion now, so.
Just make a motion. Make a motion, vote out tonight? We have to move it forward. Well, then, listen.
Did you agree?
So, without calling questions, you're not gonna answer my question.
What? Yeah, we're changing. We're gonna take part of the roof. Alderman, or I'm sorry, Mr. Cage? I promoted you.
Yeah, not that important. So, just to clarify, the roof of 50%, I know Streetscape had a recommendation for the parking lot, which we talked about at the back, to repaving 50%. So, please don't forget, I think with the trading of those two things, I think, we're not talking about huge numbers. So, the important thing is 50% is what we're looking at, and also 37.5% of the 50%. So, you know, I don't want anyone to get, assume that we're giving away the farm here.
Yeah.
The numbers that we'll probably end up talking about, you know, without calculating, calculating them right in front of me, we're talking about like $5,000 or $10,000. So, we're in the ballpark. I'll bring back those numbers for clarification, so everybody has them, and then we can make that decision between a number that's, that's not a huge difference.
Okay.
The new motion should be contingent on the new numbers at next meeting.
Okay, so the new motion will be contingent on the new numbers at next week's meeting?
Right.
Okay. Did, Alderman Sizmarsky, did you have a question?
My question is simply to you and Mr. Messina, you guys wanted a building knocked down because it was a nuisance to the city. It was an eyesore. It sits empty today. This gentleman has a business today. How, how are you sitting here, not, dividing $5,000 and $10,000 is beyond me. It's not millions. That land is worth millions. That land is worth a million dollars. We got a bank worth a million dollars. We have nobody building on it. We have a empty lot on Ash and Irving, nobody pulling on it. But you guys wanted it gone. I want the stuff on Ward 4 gone that we own, but you guys won't agree to that. You wanted it to stay there. So, how you guys can sit here and bicker over $5,000, $10,000 is well beyond me. I don't understand that.
Okay.
If you could explain it to me, explain it to me.
Okay, that'll be for a different time. Mayor, did you have anything?
It's not a different time, it's right now. We're agreeing on it. We're voting on this.
Okay. Let's take the roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Stay.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
That passes.
Next, items to be considered at future meetings. Nothing being said, I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Public Health, Safety, Judiciary and Ethics Committee called order. Let the minute taker note that all the elected officials are the same, nothing's changed. I need an approval of the minutes.
A moment.
Second? Just need a second. There you go.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passed. All right, we've got here, one report, a couple of reports and recommendations. First being that an ordinance amending Chapter 5, Article 4, Section 5.407 of the Municipal Code of the City of Wooddale to amend the language regarding persons under 21 years of age. Chief, do you want to further elaborate on that?
Sure, will do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So, earlier this summer, when we were going through the liquor code for another issue, it was noticed that there's current language in there referencing persons under 21 years of age could be transporting liquor by order of his or her parent. Not sure if that dates back to the days when you could write a letter to the grocery store to give your kids cigarettes or something, but it needs to be removed from the code, so...
Because back then, you could carry the buckets across the street when you served it.
Right. So, this does not affect persons under 21 that are operating under the performance of a liquor license to serve liquor, which is currently allowed. They cannot pour, mix, or draw the liquor, but they can serve it to tables. So, we're just clarifying the language in this. And also, I thought it was a good time to add in some reference that anyone who is under, all delivery or service must be conducted by those that are Basset-trained. So, it just references the section, just to clarify that, that they have to be in accordance with that, too. That's the recommendation tonight.
Great clarification. Alderman Jacob, you're about to raise your hand.
Yes, was there something in particular that brought this up, or was just a matter of looking at the codes and...
All stuff.
Yeah, there was no case or anything. It was literally, as a review of the code was going on, it was discovered that maybe that wasn't right.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Sizmarsky, please.
Do we need a recommendation or vote on this?
Motion.
Motion, I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance of Chapter 5, Article 5, Article 4.
And who seconded that? Sorry, I didn't hear it.
Nobody yet.
Nobody yet.
I'll second the motion.
There's the motion and the second, okay. Sometimes I can't hear down here too good. Any other questions?
I'll answer that.
Yeah, any more questions? All right, could you call the roll, call the roll here, please?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Okay, Item 2 is a request for additional Class GS liquor license. Take it away.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
If there's something to take away.
Sure, no problem. So, as you know, city council authorizes the number of liquor licenses, and the liquor commissioner then has the authority to issue those licenses. We, standard practice is to not have any open liquor licenses, to give council some discretion and, you know, control on the number of liquor licenses. So, tonight, we, the applicant is here, the mayor did receive a letter from the Shell at 1001 North Wooddale Road, looking to get a Class GS liquor license that allows for package sales. At gas station, it does not allow for any on-promises consumption, and they're limited to, by ordinance, to 10% of their floor space dedicated to liquor sales. So, that's really the request that's out there tonight. If council wants to approve, we'll bring an ordinance forward to add a Class GS license.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yeah, Chief, is that the Shell Station, correct?
Correct, at the corner of Wooddale and Thornstone.
All right, just wanted everyone to know where it's at.
Alderman Woods?
Thank you. Couple questions. One, the letter is written in a different corporate name than is the holder of the gas station. Is the gas station the one applying for?
Sir, could you...
They'll be a...
Yes, all of our businesses are, work under different entities, but they're all managed by our family company.
Under that umbrella?
Right.
Okay, but it'll be applied for under Wooddale?
Oil company here.
Shell, oil, that's right. Thank you. And while you're there, so the, the next one is the 10%. Is that 10% of the floor area combined? Because you have two stores in there, right? You have a Subway and the convenience store?
Yeah, I believe the 10% is only for our convenience store, not the Subway side.
Okay. All right, that was it. Thank you.
Anybody else, questions? Alderman Wesley?
There's a Subway in that building?
Yes, and you better eat fresh.
Okay. My question is, the ID checking, are they putting the one that they put in, like the marathon up there that they slate, scan the license and the, or how they doing that? Or are they just going to look at the license and say that?
We haven't finalized any way that we're going to be checking IDs. We're welcome to any suggestions that anyone has about effective ways to check IDs, but we can make a commitment to be very secure in the way we check IDs.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Alderman Woods, sorry.
No, thank you. Something just popped in my head. This one's for maybe the chief, maybe the city manager, maybe we throw Brad in, maybe, maybe anybody. So, given this license, this property, I know under the gaming laws that truck stops, which this would be classified as, under certain size, shape, and constraints, are allowed to get gaming machines if they have liquor licenses. Does this establishment have the ability? I know they're not requesting, but because of property sizes, they have the ability to, in the future, apply for gaming?
Sure, I can, I can take that.
Please do.
So, one is they do not meet the number of gallon requirements to be considered a truck stop. I believe that's been explored before. The other important part of that is, though, if they do meet the truck stop requirements, they don't actually have to have a liquor license to get the video gaming. There are some truck stops out there that have no liquor sales, but they are allowed video gaming, and that would be under the state code, so... But right now, they don't meet those requirements.
You can get a truck in that somewhere anyway.
Any other questions?
I couldn't get my truck in there if I wanted to.
Did you make a motion, Alderman Sizmarsky, before?
Yeah.
Anybody second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. I have one question, a little offbeat here, but I may have to abstain from this vote. Are you related to Mansour Ali Lakani?
That's my father.
Love your father. I have to abstain because of a potential trans, conflict of interest.
I was the former director of franchise development for Subway.
I know Stan very well. So, I'm gonna have to abstain from the vote. So, do a roll call, please. Eileen, for the request for additional class...
Alderman Sorrentino?
Abstain.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
All right, that passes. One other thing for the record, Eileen, I used the wrong terminology up here. In lieu of abstain, it should have been a recuse. So, I recuse myself. All right, well, that passes. Congratulations, Mr. Lakani. Give my best to your family. Call him Sonny from Subway. All righty then, you're like the judge from Connecticut. All righty. You know what I'm talking about. All right, items to be considered at future meetings, the intersection options at the corner of Potter and Spruce, be considered down the road. Any other business at hand now? Matt, I will make a motion for an adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We be adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Eileen.
I'd like to bring the Public Works Committee meeting. Minute taker, please take note of the same council members present. And also, I want to make a motion to approve the minutes of July 9, 2020, Public Works Committee meetings.
Second.
That's my motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any corrections to those minutes? I'm sorry.
Nope.
No corrections, and we've got all in favor, and opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next is a report and recommendation, adopting the City of Wooddale Engineering Design and Development Standard Manual. As this is over 400 pages, we're going to table this, or else we'll be here, it's about 1:00 in the morning, so...
I'll second that motion, table.
That's my motion. We've got a second. All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's tabled. Thank you. And the next is authorizing the agreement between the City of Wooddale and BPT, construction for the Salt Creek Greenway Trail Bridge Rehabilitation Project, in the amount not to exceed $130,329, that is my motion.
Second.
Any questions on the motion? Mayor?
Just raise my hands, I can take my mask off. So, this is the railings and, right, did I read that correctly? There was like two alternates?
Yeah, correct. So, this was originally designed, if you recall, a few years back, this was awarded to Thomas Engineering to design and oversee a project to rehabilitate that bridge. There was mason repairs, steel repairs, and steel painting. It was determined that due to those small quantities, it should be split up separately into three contracts, and this is the final two remaining contracts. So, this is steel repairs, as well as painting of the steel structures, and some staining to the concrete.
Follow? Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know, I thought I said that they were replacing some steel or something?
Go ahead, Derek.
They'll have to make minor repairs and replace some of the grout at some of the steel structures, but there's not much steel replacement. That was actually the smallest of the three contracts.
All right.
Alderman Wesley?
If I am mistaken, we are talking about the Elizabeth Bridge, right?
No.
I'm sorry, this is the pedestrian bridge over Irving Park Road, the Salt Creek Greenway Trail.
Okay, what, all right.
Go ahead.
So, my question on that one, what about that tuck pointing that we talked about, that the bricks are falling out on that one end? Is that part of this?
We're actually looking to do that separately when we do the asphalt repairs to the aprons. That's not a structural matter, which is why it wasn't addressed during the other mason repairs. We're gonna have a landscaper look at that under a smaller operating budget contract.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I have one. We got light in up there, right? I mean...
We do have lighting, yeah.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
I've made a motion. You have a motion, a second. That takes it.
Yeah, I'd say...
Yep, it's up there.
Go ahead.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. I put everything in. Question popped in my head while we're doing the bridge.
It happens.
So, this is another project that went through Streetscape, right? And we looked at all kinds of alternatives, and we spent a lot of time and energy, and went through a lot of iterations, and then the county and IDOT and everybody shot it down. So, there was gonna be new signage, new, right, branding. Can we, if nothing else, change the existing round emblem and get a similar, like kind, but the new emblem and apply that? Is that something maybe we could?
Go ahead, Derek.
Figure out? I don't know if we'll be able to get it into this project, but for, for the future, to get it on there and make that change.
Yeah, I believe that was something that was looked at previously, and it was determined that there was too many obstacles in dealing with IDOT. It's definitely something we can look into again. Like you said, maybe not a part of this project, but...
The other one was a lighted lettering and everything. It was reverse punch-out. All I'm saying is, right now, we have a metal, whatever that is, aluminum, bronze, whatever, stamped and enamelled emblem, the old one. Can we get the same thing, same size? Obviously, it would be a square versus a circle.
Right.
But get that up there, so the branding's consistent. Since one already exists, I would think that we should be able to put like and kind replacement in.
Right, yeah, let me look into more of what that would entail, and I can get back to it with some details.
All right, so you'll have that next week?
I don't know about that fast, but eventually.
Any other questions? If there are no other questions, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Alderman Woods. Woods?
Uh, yes.
Jeff.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yep.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next is approval of agreement between the City of Wooddale and HR Green for the Phase One Engineering Services for Elizabeth Drive Bridge over Salt Creek. Replacement rehabilitation in the amount not to exceed three hundred and one thousand and seventy-one dollars and that is my motion.
Second.
Do we have a presentation on that, Director?
Uh, I have, yeah, I give actually a brief correction to that. The not to, actual not to exceed amount, uh, one of the figures from one of the subcontractors was actually a placeholder. So the actual proposal came in slightly higher. So the corrected amount should be not to exceed three hundred and five thousand, two hundred dollars.
Cancelled, friend.
Three hundred and five.
Okay, I'll note the changes.
And if acceptable, I'll just give a, a brief recap since it's, we've been discussing this for a while and it's, uh, it's been rather confusing, so.
Go ahead.
Uh, the Elizabeth Drive Bridge over Salt Creek was inspected on a biannual basis and was found to be structurally deficient and functionally obsolete. HR Green assisted the city with applying for and securing SDP Bridge Funding, which is an eighty-twenty split for a bridge rehabilitation project. And as it is a federally funded project, we have to follow certain IDOT qualifications-based selection procedures for entering into an agreement with our engineer. And this is the, uh, we submitted an RFP, uh, and we followed those processes and the committee previously authorized staff to enter into negotiations with HR Green. So these will be submitted to IDOT and pending their review, uh, will be approved for the first phase, which is some exploratory work as well as a preliminary, preliminary design.
And this three hundred and five thousand, we've got here Phase One, is there gonna be another phase? They're gonna charge us another three hundred and five thousand?
So at the end of Phase One, uh, we will have the option to enter into a Phase Two agreement with HR Green. And we actually have representatives from HR Green here tonight if you have any more detailed questions into those agreements or the IDOT process.
My question is, um, you know, there's a lot of residents that are, um, coming forward and wanted to know if we can, also the mayor mentioned it, if we can extend a jogging and path, bicycle path from Addison Road going east to Wooddale Road. Would this be part of the project?
Yeah, actually, we are in discussions with the Forest Preserve District, uh, to extend that path from Addison eastward towards the Forest Preserve entrance and carry it over the creek as part of our bridge. They would be able to eliminate a structure, uh, from their inventory and they would also be a participating agent in this project, further contributing to the cost.
But it won't go to Wooddale Road?
Eventually, that is the plan, to have it go to Wooddale Road, but perhaps not part of this individual project.
Mayor?
Right, actually, I asked those same questions I asked the engineer. Because of the, the funding and the fed, federal funding and everything, we have to do from the driveway from the Forest Reserve to Addison Road. If we wanna do the other stuff, uh, that can be done, but it has to be done separately. Otherwise, it will delay the project and we need to move forward. I see Mr. Crawl is heading towards the microphone and Jeff is also anxious to take off his mask, so.
I'm not gonna take off my mask. Anyway, uh, he's probably gonna say the same thing as me, but, uh, the mayor's correct. We're actually in the process of gonna, we're gonna apply for a separate grant in addition to this eighty percent grant we just got, which will be a separate pool of money for the path you're talking about. Just from the requirements, like the mayor said, you can't quote join them. Uh, but as Director Lang said, we already have a partnership with the Forest Preserve District. So in addition to the eighty percent grant, we've got their financial commitment, which will work out in an IGA. And then we're in the process of applying for more grant funding, which we're pretty confident we're gonna get for the continuation onto Wooddale Road. I'm sure he's gonna say the same thing, but maybe not.
Ron Corl, go ahead.
Uh, hi, committee. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Jeff Soright, uh, with regards to the path, we have to find logical termini. And in all likelihood, the FHWA is going to say that it's the driveway from the Forest Reserve to Addison to make that link. Now, I will ask if we can take it to Wooddale, but it's gonna probably exceed the, the limits of the influence of the bridge. So they're probably gonna say no. As such, we were thinking downstream and there is a, a different funding mechanism, ITEP funding. And, uh, that, those applications are due November 2nd and we will be putting in an application for funding. There's no guarantee, but we feel pretty confident, um, about the approach. It's connecting two county route facilities. You're crossing a physical barrier being Salt Creek. In a two and a half mile distance between Irving Park and US 20, there are three crossings of Salt Creek, Irving Park Road, Lake Street, and Elizabeth Drive. So for, um, a continuity and an accessibility east-west across the physical barrier, it seems like it will, um, lend itself to, to that type of funding. It'll be a good benefit cost ratio project, but there's no guarantee, but we are going to see.
Also, safety's important because I, I take that street every morning going to work and I see joggers, I see bikers. And it's dangerous because it's such a small, narrow street, so.
Absolutely.
Let me start. Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
At one time, weren't we discussing, maybe I, we might remember. What were you talking about straightening out Elizabeth Drive somehow? Is that, so they are gonna straighten?
Part of the project.
Okay, um.
Go ahead.
We're, we're going to go through the engineering process. Because we've got the federal funding, we're about to go through the IDOT NEPA process and that's what Phase One Engineering is. It's Preliminary Planning, Preliminary Engineering, and Environmental Studies. Through that process, we will look at alternatives. My feeling is because we're using federal dollars, we're going to have to eliminate those substandard curves which currently exist out there. And, and in all likelihood, that's what probably going to be approved. But we'll have to go through the process and we'll look at, is it possible to put back in, in its current configuration? I don't think it's gonna meet any current design standards. As such, we're gonna have to look at an alternative configuration.
Alderman, uh, Sizmarsky?
Do we know the age of that bridge? Has anybody given that?
Um, Alan believes that it's nineteen sixty-seven. I know it's in the sixties.
So it's over fifty years old. So, so your new drawing, you're saying the prospective road will go straight through, getting rid of that curve, if we get a grant?
We've got the grant. As a matter of fact, we've actually got two funding sources.
So we can get rid of that curve?
That's, that in all likelihood is what is going to, we'll have to go through the alternatives analysis. There'll be a couple, there's only a couple of different ways. Put it back in in kind, straighten it out completely, or put in a, a less severe curve.
So what do we need for IDOT?
Well, they're gonna be the one, since they are the, um, stewards of the federal dollars, we are going to have to submit in their forms, um, the scope, man-hours, and fee. And they're gonna go through it and approve the, approve the, uh, agreement.
So they're gonna approve you going straight across instead of the curve?
That'll be once we get notice to proceed and develop engineering, uh, alternatives.
Okay.
And put those before.
So that's the obstacle right now, other than the creek?
No, it's, it's not an obstacle. It's, it's simply, um, getting the agreement. We're going through the, uh, review, comments, and/or adjustments of the, um, contract and getting that approved. First and foremost, it'll go through the district. Once the district says it's good to go, we'll package a formal final submittal. That's where y'all will execute a couple of forms. That package will be sent through DuPage Mayor's Managers Council to IDOT. IDOT District One will then send it to Central Office for their review and/or approval.
So District One, okay. All right, thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Thank you. First, so the three hundred in the, the new corrected amount, three hundred and five thousand, two hundred and five dollars is just for the preliminary engineering Phase One, preliminary engineering, preliminary design, and some.
Environmental studies.
Environmental studies.
Correct.
And so if we move to Phase Two, which we would need to, to complete the bridge and since we've already got funding that we know we're going there, we just don't know the shape of it. Is that gonna be another three hundred and five thousand dollars? What's?
Generally speaking, I mean, if you're just kinda painting with a broad brush, six percent is usually the Phase One construction, six percent of the construction estimate, which is just a ballpark figure. Eight percent is what we kinda use to ballpark Phase Two Engineering. And then typically for construction management, it's plus or minus ten percent, depending upon complexity and some, you know, duration of the project, et cetera, et cetera. The funding sources that we have were SDP Bridge Funding. The SDP Bridge Funding covers Phase One Engineering, Phase Two Engineering, right-of-way acquisition, construction, and construction management. So it's soup to nuts, the complete thing. The DOT desires to maintain as much as the SDP funding for Phase One, Phase Two Engineering. So they look to use special bridge funds to cover Phase Three and construction management. That application was put in and we received that as well. So, all the funding is going to be at an eighty-twenty split.
Okay, and a follow-up question. So with that same brush you were using, the broad brush?
Yes.
I like that brush.
It, it doesn't get you in as much trouble.
It's easy to paint. What, what's this project total gonna be? Do you have an idea?
Well, for the engineering, total engineering plus construction.
Somebody's driving over the new bridge in their brand-new bicycle purchased by, uh, Mr. Catalano to ride to work.
This is shooting from the hip and, uh, my colleague may, may, uh, shake his head. Yeah, say, hey, you're not shooting high enough. But, um, if we ballpark Phase One at the three hundred and five, or it's three hundred and five and we ballpark Phase Two at, let's say, three fifty, and construction at, say, four hundred, so there's a million-ish in engineering. The right-of-way, I am not sure, but let's just say, uh, fifty thousand dollars. Whether it be temporary easements, uh, permanent easements, or fee simple acquisitions. And then plus or minus, we're at about two point six for a bridge. And that's without knowing anything, let alone the reconstruction of the pavement and the pavement approaches that are going to be influenced. So, three, seven to four million would be a general figure for a new structure.
Thank you.
Mayor?
You may put the brush away.
Mayor?
And just so everybody's understanding, that bridge will probably not be in, under construction until the end of twenty-three and sometime twenty-four, is that correct?
At, at the very earliest. Basically, what we're gonna be now waiting for is the approval of the contract once it goes to IDOT. I would say optimistically, once it gets to Central Office, plus or minus six months, I will give you a horror story of a job we won in another municipality in twenty-eighteen, uh, February. And we got authorization to proceed in January of twenty-twenty. So, hopefully, that's not the situation here. Um, and we're plus or minus getting started in January, February-ish. Eighteen months is typically what's allotted for Phase One Engineering, about twelve months for Phase Two, assuming that right-of-way acquisition goes smoothly. And then it'd be a one-season construction job in all likelihood. So twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four is, is the neighborhood for construction.
Okay, uh, Alderman Jacob?
Uh, since we, uh, you brought up the, uh, doing the bike trail to, from Wooddale Road to Addison Road. Would that be, seeing that this isn't happening overnight, would that be done at the same time then, most likely?
Well, again, we are going to seek, um, funding from the ITEP fund source. That's not due until November. I'm figuring it's probably a spring acknowledgement of when that does or does not, we get selected for that. And then, because it's a state source, again, it would probably be Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three. Due to the smaller nature of the project, I think that that would go faster. How much faster, I, I can't honestly say. But it could be that these things dovetail in quite nicely. I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If there are none, a roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Uh, yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yep.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. Uh, next is an approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Superior Road Stripe Inc. For the, uh, two thousand and twenty pavement marking program in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand and a hundred and fifteen dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions on the motion? The, uh, none, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yep.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Motion carries. And next is approval and agreement between the City of Wooddale and Stroda Asphalt Services, Inc. For the two thousand and twenty pavement patching and crack and sealing program in amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and one hundred and ten dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? No questions, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yep.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
And last is I&amp;I Sewer Repair, approval for an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Hall Construction, Inc. For the fiscal year ending, uh, two thousand and twenty-one sewer rehabilitation in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and twenty-two thousand and a hundred and five dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Woods?
Thank you. This is a, a pretty robust budget. Was this planned for and how come it, it's so big?
Go ahead, Derek.
So we had originally budgeted for about three hundred thousand dollars in repairs this year. Uh, but during the study and investigation phase, it was found that the sewers were in much worse condition than we had originally anticipated. There's a lot more emergency repairs that were necessary. And, uh, bids came in slightly higher due to the, uh, the location of the sewers being through backyards, which is gonna require bracing of, you know, sheds and utility poles and things like that, removal of trees and complicated restorations, uh, as well as some uncertainty with regards to the condition of the sewer, which has not been lined yet. So there could possibly be some padding by the contractors in there. But, uh, we've decided that we've, you know, we've started this process of repairing the sewers in this area and, uh, we need to see it through. And that's why we wanna prioritize these repairs over and if necessary, push out some other repairs to maybe the lift stations or the south wastewater treatment plant in the future.
Go ahead, follow-up.
Yeah, what you just said, uh, the word padding.
Right.
Usually has a negative connotation, so it's a padding that we know about, right? That there's quantities and stuff above, in case it's needed, right? That's what you meant when you said that?
Go ahead.
Correct, yeah. There is, is a relatively significant portion of sewer which has yet to be televised. So it's uncertain what kind of repairs are gonna be necessary to that in existing conditions. So I think, you know, given that the contractor's inheriting those risks.
Right, so, so that's a big padding, so we, it's like seventy-three percent over the amount. So we're gonna have to, you know, our, our crew out there looking at the situation and.
Yeah, our crew will be assisting with entryway into the backyards and things like that. We also have RJN who is, uh, providing construction oversight on this project.
So, so it's possible if they don't use, I mean, if they don't foresee all those problems, the price won't be, I mean, the price will go down or?
It's, it's possible that it'll be less than that. Uh, we had discussed, uh, internally, uh, with the finance department, the, the director, Brad Wilson, uh, that, that we felt that it was gonna be around five hundred and fifty thousand, which was needed. Uh, and it, as it turned out, bids came in significantly higher. And one of the reasons is because of the uncertainty of the excavations as well as the lining that will be necessary.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
We could always hope the price of your project comes down too. But at the same, it's not, not to argue about that, but at the same time, Ward Four has a, a very different problem than Ward Three and Two. Lot of, lot of the water went to the backyards, which we don't use anymore. So now water goes there, sits there. We don't use those rear drainages anymore. Everybody goes out front. But some people still drain to the backyards and flood. So, I, I understand where he's putting a padding in and I understand that part. And I'm, I'm for having that buffer, just in case he needs it.
Go ahead, Derek.
Correct, and just to be clear, this is, uh, for the sanitary sewer system.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, there's, there's a lot of problems out there in Four too.
Absolutely.
In the east and west part of Four.
Alderman Wesley?
So. Where, where were we coming out with the extra money? You said you're cutting back on what?
Go ahead.
As you may recall, earlier during budget discussions, we had been setting aside some funds for an eventual rehabilitation of the south wastewater treatment plant. So the idea would be to push that out instead of maybe seven, eight years, maybe nine, ten years and do, uh, some, you know, some maintenance projects here and there, similar to what we did this year with some piping replacement and painting. Uh, also, we've been doing lift stations on a biannual basis. Uh, the next lift station due would be Ash, which we have done some, some maintenance to this year uh, in order to string that along, so maybe we could push that out another year or two as well.
Go ahead.
So, I'm not in favor of pushing back that south plant. I mean, eventually that south plant's going to NOS. EPA is going to NOS sooner or later. We've been pushing that off. So, I, I'm in favor during this project, but to push back that south plant? That south plant's going nickel and dimeless to death pretty soon.
I understand your, your hesitation and not wanting to push that off either. Uh, we, we deal with that plan every day. We know, uh, what kind of condition it's in. But as a department, we have to prioritize, uh, you know, projects that are of the most urgent need. And if we don't undertake this product now, there's gonna be many more of those emergency repairs that we've had over the past, uh, year, year and a half.
Okay, Alderman Jacob?
Was there a certain, uh, uh, street or were you, it's mentioned going into the yards and things? Was, or was that kinda throughout the subdivision or ward?
It's actually all of the, the sanitary sewers in that area run through the backyards and it's the area bound by, uh, and it's the area bound by Stonemonton North, Irving Park Road on the south, Wooddale Road and the city limits to the east.
And then do we need to get easements or something from the residents to access their yards then, is that going to be?
We actually won't, we have a utility easement over our sanitary sewers, it is, we have been coordinating with the residents to coordinate access, and we've had success with that.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Zizmarski?
Correct, this was budgeted last year, correct? Did it be done?
Yes, we've actually budgeted, budgeted this in the C.I.P. for the next, I believe, for the next five years at three hundred thousand each, and like I said, once we did the exploratory work, we realized it was in more urgent need of repair than we had originally anticipated.
Mayor?
Yeah, as long as we don't push the treatment back as far back as these windows here in City Hall. I was looking at some of those photos and, I mean, I take it where it looks like it's collapsed, cement's collapsed, those aren't mining-type projects, we have to go in and put in all the piping, is that correct?
Right, there'll be several replacement, point repairs and main replacement throughout the project, I believe there's maybe six or eight of them, Brett?
Six.
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 Right, some of those photos look pretty bad and it has to be done.
Absolutely, there's, I mean, there's parts where there's nothing holding up the ground above it but, but gravel, the pipe has completely disappeared essentially, so.
Right, it's, no, it needs to be done, okay.
Okay, any other questions? If there are no other questions, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Zizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yep.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Items to consider, future meetings, I have none, if anybody else wants to add, go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
We, I'm sorry, we had tabled that, the whole four hundred pages, when, when were you, did you discuss that?
Go ahead.
That'll be in September at the next committee.
Okay, thank you.
Did we get a copy of that before that?
Yeah, the reason probably for the tabling was, we gave, we distributed electronic copies, three to four hundred pages, if you guys would like, please email the Managers' Office, either me or Janelle, let me know if you want a hard copy, and then we can get your hard copy.
Yeah, you're special, you're special.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, any other?
You're in the front row.
Okay, move to adjourn? Second.
Move.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post adjourn, thank you.
Next, I'd like to call the Finance and Administration Committee to order, let the minutes have to reflect, the same members are here, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting.
Second.
July ninth, twenty-twenty. Any questions, corrections, changes, there being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve, that passes, next, report and recommendation, Series Twenty-Two Refunding Analysis, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just have a couple of slides to help frame out the conversation a little bit. Mara, if you could just go to the next page by chance, I think PDF, maybe not a PowerPoint, anyways, all right, so, so the two thousand and twelve series bonds were issued for the first phase of the wastewater treatment plant, you may recall that the second phase was issued in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, we started paying on them, which was through the I.E.P.A. low-interest loan program, so we're not talking about the I.E.P.A. loan, we're talking about the bonds that we issued as a city alternate revenue bonds. They are refundable beginning in December of this year, and we're looking to use the firm that originally purchased the bonds to maximize the savings, not have some of the savings eaten up through issuance costs, underwriting costs, et cetera. They also, the same firm purchased our stormwater bonds a few months ago, so we have a really good working relationship with that firm, and so they're, you know, they're looking to help us refinance, lower the interest rates on these bonds, and save the city some money. So there's three options, option one and two are kind of the streamlined ones, where we would just pass an ordinance in October, probably the second meeting in October, it would retain the same twelve-year timeline and would reduce the interest costs over the life of the remaining twelve years of the bonds. There would be annual savings in each scenario, they are a little bit different, one is more level savings per year, one does escalate the savings, which kind of flattens the debt service out as time goes on. Then there's the public hearing option, which is scenario three, that one, since there's a, what they call a negative impact, so it does add two years on, so there's new money in those out two years, so you do have to do full newspaper posting, public hearing, and go through all of the BINA and all of that stuff, so it's a little more involved, and as you'll see when we get to the numbers in a couple of slides, there's really no savings to that, not, not at the end of the day, but there is more significant savings per year, but again, you add the two years on to the debt service at the end, and so that would be paid off about the same time as I.E.P.A. loan, so it's a little bit of good with the bad on that one. Then the, this is scenario one, this is the level debt refinancing savings, as you can see, the blue column in the far right, the savings is roughly the same, twenty-three, twenty-four thousand per year, estimated savings about two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Scenario two, so this one does ramp up a little bit, so they're pushing the, basically this one is, they're saying, when they're refinancing the bonds, they're expecting the long-term rates to be lower out twelve years, so they're keeping the current bonds at roughly the same interest rate and then pushing the savings and the lower interest rates out into the out years, so you can see the savings escalates as you get further out into time on that scenario, estimated savings about three hundred and seven thousand. I say estimated because we're not really going to know what the actual numbers are on these until they're actually priced in the October, November timeframe. And then this is the option three, you can see there's more significant savings in each of the years, fifty-five thousand up to a hundred and forty-five thousand, but then the poison pill is that you add the two years of debt service on at the end for another six hundred and five, six hundred and eight thousand, matching the current years, so again, you get more savings in each year, but you're adding two years on to it, so it's, you know, they put this in there because it is technically a viable option and it would line up with the paying off of the I.E.P.A. loan, so just again, I know this is, doesn't sound like this is a popular option, however, it is a viable option, and we wanted to present all the viable options to the council, just so that there was, you know, clarity with what we did have before us. In the memo, staff did recommend option two, but again, that's why we're here tonight, to see what you all think and how you want to proceed.
I'll start with making a motion to approve option two. Are there any questions? There being none, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Zizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yep.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
That passes. Next, items to be considered at future meetings, there being none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you for joining.
Aye, and bye.